Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this is the nation under government, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gunn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A minutes of the regular meeting of the members of Scranton Housing Authority, held March 4, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, tax assessors' report, four hearing date to be held, May 1, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have a couple. City Hall will be closed this Friday, April 19th, in observance of Good Friday. DPW will be working this day. They will be off the following Monday, Easter Monday, April 22nd, and refuse and recycling collection will be one day behind next week, the week of the 22nd. Also, next Monday, April 22nd, at 5:15 PM, council will hold a public caucus with the city treasurer and members of Northeast Revenue Service to discuss refuse delinquency procedures. Does anyone else have an announcement?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodewanitz.
Joan Hodewanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I'd like to go back to the delinquent garbage fee. You just recently approved an ethics code for the city, a revised ethics code, which I think was a good thing, but it still bothers me. I've asked the question, haven't gotten an answer really from anybody, about what the city's hiring policy is. Most private employers, when they hire someone, will do a drug screen and they'll do a criminal background check, but I think, you know, there ought to be three things at a minimum. Those two, plus a check to make sure all taxes and fees have been paid, and that's something that should be done annually during performance reviews and whenever anyone is promoted. And anyone who has a financial emergency, and those things do happen, should be required to come up with a government-approved payment plan, so to show that they're making good faith effort to pay their taxes and their fees. And anybody who refuses to do that, won't do it, or thinks that the rules don't apply to them, should be terminated for cause. I saw a letter to the editor by a gentleman named Watkins, and he raised the question, is Northeast Revenue Service earning its fee as your municipal collection agency? So I'm glad to see they're coming in next week for a public caucus, because I have the same question. Mr. Watkins also suggested, and I second his suggestion, that the paper should publish the names of everyone who's delinquent and their taxes and their fees, because those of us who are not delinquent are picking up the slack. But I have another question. Someone asked me this, and I said, well, maybe I should ask city council. Mr. Rogan, you mentioned that one of the reasons why we don't fail to collect the garbage is that it's a, there's a health issue there, and also you might get complaints from the neighbors who have to put up with that uncollected garbage. But what's to prevent the city from picking up the garbage, but at the same time sending the name of that delinquent rate payer to the magistrate? What's to prevent us from doing that? They shouldn't be able to eat their, you know, have their cake and eat it too. Maybe you could ask the question of the city solicitor on that. I would strongly recommend that. Next, with regard to this firefighter, Carl Umbrester, okay? You know, this incident on, I believe it was April 10th, no one can prejudge what happened there. There will be an investigation, and the facts will come out. But the paper made it clear that there were two other occasions in the past three years where this firefighter was brought up on charges of DUI. In fact, last December, he pled guilty to the second incident, and in March, he was sentenced to 90 days' house arrest and 18 months probation. So my question is, if he is sitting home on house arrest, are my taxpayer dollars going to support him? You know, I, maybe this is a union contract issue. If it is a contract issue, I think the next time the union contract is opened, that should be at the top of the agenda by the next mayor. You know, you do bad, you get fired, end the sentence. We don't need people breaking the law, being protected by a union contract. That's my opinion. Most of the firefighters and police are honorable men and women, but there are always going to be a few that cross the line. Next, I was here last Friday when the bids were open for the stormwater management engineering services, and two bids came in, Arcadis for $98,000 and Herbert, Roland, and Grubik Auto Clark Summit for $160,000. I'm hoping that in the near future, if not already, the city will have decided who will run with the RFP, who they will contract with, because there's only 199 days until October 31st, when the MS4 permit runs out. So tic-tac, that clock is running. Next, there was a meeting at Colts a few days ago, and you may have seen it in the paper, a call to action. House Bill 1677 is going to require the use of regional brokers for their medical assistance transportation. If that happens and it's not done through Colts, that is going to cut back on ridership, it's going to cut back on routes, and it's going to result in layoffs. I strongly recommend, considering the number of Scranton residents who depend on Colts, especially this medical assistance transportation program, that you check this out. This is a legislative issue which will affect Scranton residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. You know, last week, Paula Horro was here speaking. I think council should bring him in, because I don't know if you have questions, but I have lots of questions for him about what he said last week. First of all, he said, "The Penn Fed building is absolutely perfect for what the city of Scranton needs, office space that serves the public." Well, my first question would be to him, what would his plan be for city council chambers? Is he going to have a place like this down there? I don't think so. I think his plan would probably be have a long folding table with five folding chairs for you people and folding chairs for the audience. I don't know what his idea is, but that's one question I would have for him. Then he says licensing and inspections, gets 200 visitors a day, but it can't go to the first floor. Why does it have to go to the first floor? Why can't they stay where they are? I refuse to believe they get 200 visitors a day. That would be my next question for him. Oh, and this is the big one. He said he believes restoration could be done by a private sector entity and cost much less. How does he know it would cost much less? If it would cost much less for a private entity, then why wouldn't it be less for us? That's, I think you should bring him in and ask him all these questions. And what makes him an expert on this stuff anyway? He's a maintenance worker. He's not an architect, he's not an engineer, so. And the one thing I agree with Mr. Evans, why do we have to do this all at one time? Do the important things first, then do more next year, more a year after, until it's done. Why do we have to do it all at once? I think that's a great idea. And I don't always agree with Mr. Evans, but with that, I do. Moving on. The garbage fees. A bunch of people have come up to me, and I agree with them, and say, don't give these people that owe all this money a break or amnesty or whatever. They don't deserve it. For example, Fay Franisso. This woman makes $70,000 a year, five rental properties. People like that should not get amnesty or a break, they should pay the full amount. I'm paying the full amount. They shouldn't, they're the ones that didn't want to pay. They should have to pay up everything right now. And, and like as Fay Franisso said last week, and as Joan just said too, we should be going after these people, take them to magistrate, and get something done. Lastly, last week I saw the news, a bunch of people from East Mountain were against a drug treatment center that wants to open it in the old Geisinger Building on Route 307. Nobody wants anything in their backyard anymore. The people that will be going to that place, they're sick people, they need help, and I'm not ashamed to say, my daughter used to be one of those people, but she got treatment, and she's a wonderful hairstylist in the city now, as Attorney-Minor could attest. She does his hair, and she, she does, she does Kathene's hair, he used to be the stenographer here, and she's, she's so busy, Dave Bolzoni used to go to her, but she can't fit him into her schedule now. He wants to walk in and get his hair done when he wants. And, plus like I said, she has a wonderful job. She, she's at the gym every day now, works out every day, and for the last eight months or so, she's been a professional wrestler, and she won, she won her first title Saturday night in Pottstown. She won a championship belt. So I'm very proud of her, and she's an example of how these people can get turned around. They're not hardened criminals, they're not going to leave the center up there and go rob people across the street or whatever. I said, nobody wants anything in their backyard. These people need help, and the people that don't get help, they end up having, they'll either OD or whatever. My daughter lost a lot of friends that, they did get help, but maybe it wasn't enough, and she lost a lot of close friends of hers. But thank God, knock on wood, my daughter's in a much better place now, and we need these treatment centers. We should have people fighting against them. So if I, I don't know if this will come before council, but if it does, I hope you vote in favor of that treatment center. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Franisso? And just on that point, Mr. Spindler, that's, we'll be heard in front of the zoning board, that won't be coming before council, but we appreciate your comments.
Fay Franisso, Scranton. Bill, congratulations on your daughter. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
I don't, you weren't here last week, so I wanted to tell you about what I spoke about last week, about the law of the city, saying that if a person doesn't pay their garbage fee, the city has a right not to pick up their garbage. I have to disagree with Joan on this one instance. That's an incentive for people to pay their bill by not having their garbage picked up. I don't think they'd like it too much if ever, all the neighbors saw that their garbage was sitting there, that would let them know that they didn't pay their bill, and I think they'd be quick to pay it if they had that happen to them. And they, and Mr. Rogan, you said it's not practical. It's very practical. What you're saying is, you want all of us to continue paying for all of those that don't. That is not right. We're paying your salary to represent us, not what you want. You're supposed to be representing what we want. Do you know how many people have said to me, they don't care if the garbage next door isn't picked up, that they didn't pay their bills? They want these people to start paying, to make it easier for us. We've been carrying the load for all these years. Now I think it's about time you did something. Did you look into anything since I spoke with you last week? Did you check into anything about this law that the city passed, that you're supposed to be following?
I do not support not picking up garbage.
Perme?
I do not support not picking up garbage.
Yeah, but you don't support it, but that's the law.
I think what Joan suggested earlier is
No.
is something worth looking into.
No.
Not picking up garbage is not something
No. I don't care what you say. The law says that you have a right to stop picking it up. Joan said that, make it a point, maybe send them to the magistrate. You, you last week said, oh, that's not good either, because that could take months. So you, you just want an easy way out.
No, it could take months, but if garbage is piling up for months, that's a lot different than filing.
How do you know that it will be piling up for months if you don't start doing it? What are you going to do if you had per bag, which you should never do in a million years? What would you do in that case?
If we, if we had a
If you had per bag and they didn't have a sticker, would you leave it there, or would you still pick it up?
That's why people don't want a per bag system.
Well, that's neither here nor there. This is a law that you have, and I think you have to start following it. Now I'm going to come back to this. Mr. Evans, did you find out what I asked you last week about, is the city complying with the ordinance about any money coming in from the garbage fee has to go into an account only to pay the DPW bills, nothing else in the city, no other city bills?
I'll respond in motions.
No, I'd like an answer now, on here.
No, I'll respond in motions.
No, I want you to know what you found out now, so I could respond.
I'll respond in motions, Fay. Thank you.
So then I have to come back next week to respond to what you said?
Why would you have to come back next week? You'll be here.
Because maybe you want, maybe you're going to say something that I want to ask about.
I'll respond in motions.
Well, that's an easy, easy out. Well, I hope it, that just goes to show that you don't want the people to know what you're going to say while we're standing here. Unbelievable. And you're for the people? I don't think so. Mr. Gunn, how do you feel about that law? About picking up the garbage? Not picking up the people who didn't pay?
Right. I, I don't know how realistic it is, only because I don't know how you'd enforce it. In other words, who from this, you know, I'd have a lot of questions if the administration decided that that would be the route that they were going to go down. In other words, if you did start to follow that law
Yes.
who's going to come out and say, all right, we didn't pick your garbage up?
City inspectors.
Right, but we're already short on, there's a lot of, I'd have a lot of questions if that's the route that the administration chose to go down.
But in the meantime, we're paying for everybody else that didn't, and for us to wait, for them to get a lien on their property 40 or 50 years from now, that's not helping us. Mr. Donahue, how do you feel about this?
I'm still looking into the information you provided last week and that you'd sent to me, so I'll have an answer for you next week on that.
Well, I hope you would contact your lawyer to get all the avenues that you could press. Why do you have the law if you didn't want to follow it? It's like other laws that you just don't follow. Mr. Perry, how do you feel about this?
You know, to, to be honest, where I'm kind of at right now, it's, I'm falling into Ms. Hodewanitz's realm of thinking. If we did get tougher on it, and we're, because to me, a lien is telling someone, you'll probably never wind up paying it
That's right.
because you'll be dead.
That's right.
Your property's never going to be sold. So to me, the lien doesn't have enough teeth. Maybe something more of an instant after the due date, it's 90 days past the end of the year, or whatever system we come up with, then we, then we're allowed to take them to a magistrate and take them to court directly before it gets into the two years, three years without payment, four years without payment. And by the fourth or fifth year, you kind of see the trend there. They're not paying their bill. But if we can get to that point and get them to magistrate before it gets to that, I think that will, that will stop a lot of the bleeding.
Well, you could do that right now. You don't have to wait till the next payment isn't done. You could go look at the records now, who hasn't paid, and the, and the people in your office
Sure, right, anybody who
could send a bill saying
I, yeah.
you have to go to the magistrate right now.
That would be something I'm more immediate for than, than stopping a garbage collection.
But you don't need to wait 90 days.
Well, I'm talking about somebody who's, no, I'm not talking about anybody that's currently on that. I'm talking about people going forward, where if you missed it, and it's a year after, then going after them.
I'm talking about people that hadn't paid.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Mr. Evans, how do you feel about this?
I don't think it's a good idea.
Perme?
Not to pick up somebody's garbage is ludicrous. You have to pick up their garbage.
It's a law.
It doesn't matter if it's a law.
And I think many people in the city would like to see that happen, so they won't have to keep on paying for their
As far as I'm concerned, the whole system is broken. I totally get that. I don't necessarily agree with the $300 fee. I think we'd have to look at other options, because I think it's a broken system that doesn't allow for a comprehensive collection of the delinquencies.
But keep on making us pay for everybody else.
Thank you. John Foley?
I need your help because I have a concern. I dusted off some of my files, I did a white paper last March, and it came to my attention after an event last week that it probably needed to be addressed. I need you to go to the Bureau of Elections. I need you to send them a letter. I need you to have them start focusing on the whole election process. I can't deal with outside of the city of Scranton, but the city of Scranton I can deal with. What I did, the 2018 election, I embarked on my usual review. I found a whole variety of things. The most disturbing thing I found were absentee ballots. And the absentee ballot issues ran a whole range of problems, starting from, people were requested to sign absentee ballots, they were asked to give them to somebody else, it appears that all those absentee ballots were not returned, not absentee ballots, applications for absentee ballots. The absentee ballot applications that were returned, I could tell that they were prepared by somebody other than the person they were sent to. Now, I am not a handwriting expert. I'm a lot of things, but I'm not that. But I can tell numbers. So when I see somebody sign a date, and the date has a seven in one place, which is the seven we've all come to love, and then in another place, it's a European seven, which is really a backward F, then I have an idea that somebody else prepared that. There's an attestation at the bottom of the absentee ballot application that said everything is true and correct. Well, I don't see how somebody could say it's true and correct if somebody else prepared it. We actually had somebody talk to those people, and some of the responses were troubling, such as, they were instructed to hand the absentee ballot application off to somebody else, and that it would be sent in. Well, I checked, people that said they signed it never got there. They never showed up to vote. I find that problematic. I can't tell you who is interested in this issue right now, other than me, but I suspect others. In addition to that, there were several precincts. Coincidentally, those people that had a whole raft of absentee ballot applications, they were all within those precincts. And ironically, the majority of the people who asked for absentee ballot applications, they said they were going to be out of town, they showed up to vote. I talked to the Bureau of Elections people, they said that, that seemed unusual, unusual statistic from the rest of the city, the day of the election. There were precincts that had individuals representing candidates, poll watchers, which were permitted inside of the voting room. They also provided language assistance, and by and large, language assistance is permitted, and frankly, if somebody has difficult voting, they're disabled, they're entitled to it. However, they have to bring them. If somebody's a poll watcher, providing language assistance, they probably should have gone outside. But more troubling than that, before the individual, individuals went inside to sign in at the judge of elections, these individuals who were poll watchers left their position, greeted the individuals, told the judge of elections that they needed language assistance. Now, anybody who asked, they have to sign an affidavit, in fact, they needed. Some of the precincts didn't even bother to get them. Some of them started to get them late only after they were questioned. Some of the individuals who were providing language assistance went as far as to point to the ballot. That was problematic, because the judge of elections actually told them to stop doing it. They were observed afterwards, still doing it. And all of this drilled down to three candidates. I was able to glean from the numbers that there was a disproportionate share of ballots within those precincts that were only cast for three ballots. I looked at the entire rest of the city, I didn't find it. So if my time is up
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
what I would like you to do is contact the Bureau of Elections. Of course, if anybody is interested in this information, as always, I provide information to everybody. Gentlemen, have a good evening. I'm going to have dinner with my wife.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Albert Young, Scranton resident and taxpayer. After sitting home for about nine months watching council make promises to Scrantonians, for the most part, some are kept, some of the promises are not, I decided to come out of retirement. Why did I sit home for so long? Well, my last appearance here, when walking out the door, I was threatened by a member of this administration, and enough of that, I won't go any further, but I just wanted you all to know that. I have a few items here that I'd like to address. Number one, after sitting for four hours at a zoning board meeting the other night, I learned that there's supposed to be a group or a committee, a council, studying the zoning rules and regulations, and if so, I would like them to put the teeth, some teeth into R1A ratings, housing only, no more hotels, no more B&amp;B, no more anything but houses. I'm sick and tired of going through the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association and fighting a system that is broken. Second of all, I hear talk about City Hall. Well, let's remember, it's just a building, and I know there's going to be some arguments about that, but 38 years ago, I went through a merger, and we had to move to another building. I didn't like it, but it grows on you, you make a point of going with the flow. But out of that, my point is, 35 years ago, because of this merger, the Women's Resource Center received a lot of seed money in order for them to come to the city of Scranton. But during the remodeling process, we ran into a situation where the historical society stopped us from removing windows. We couldn't remove some of the windows, because it's a historical building, and some of you know it's the original Scranton estate up on Madison Avenue, which in turn cost us, cost them additional fees. So my whole point to this is, maybe it would be prudent for city council to, instead of anticipating the extra cost of what it might cost to renovate this building, or go to another building, let us put it on a ballot and let the city residents determine where they want their money spent. Enough of that. As vice president of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association, I stand here, and I was asked the other night at the meeting to ask for all city area neighborhood associations to meet under one coalition. We would like to have the neighborhood associations, their president, vice president, and secretary, maybe this, the treasurer, all of the officers meet under one group for a couple of nights to find out what is going on within the city. We're asking that they submit three dates that would, might be convenient for them, and then we would take a majority vote on that. And anybody that is listening and is a member of the association, they can send the, all of this information to me under Albert Young at 1713 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1-8509. No phone calls. Young at 1713 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509. No phone calls. And I would also like the person who is the contact with the DPW to call Mr. Gallagher and ask him if there is a possibility of removing some of the debris from Meadow Brook Creek downstream from where we were repaired. The contractors, while they were in our backyard, had to pump water 80 feet in order to get the excess water out of the conduit that they were putting in. At the top end of the repair, there is no water. In the conduit that's in my backyard, there's an average of 12 to 18 inches of water all the time. And because of the debris laying in the creek, it would be nice to make sure that this conduit is dry for a change. And most of that debris is in, at 1709, under the garage floor. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Len Cerebro?
Lenny Cerebro, Scranton resident. Happy Easter. Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
I'd like to quote John Foley, "Gentlemen, I need your help." Tim, you were supposed to call me?
Yeah, I was going to get in touch with you. We heard back from the engineer, and as of yet, we haven't heard back from him. I followed up with Lori today. He was out today, and he didn't get back to us as of the meeting time. So there's no news to report.
So what do we do if people refuse to answer?
Well, I don't know if he refused to answer, if he's working on it as we speak, or if they're trying to line up schedules. But I'm just trying to get ahold of him to see, you know, where we are with this process. Because I wanted to get back to you, but I had nothing to get back to you with.
Well, I know, and that's why I haven't been in a couple of weeks. You know, as usual, I always try to give people enough time to, you know, come up with something, anybody, anything. For like, three years now, that should be long enough. But last year, we discovered that shut down drainage pipe. Everybody agrees, Dennis Gallagher did, and John Poches, that it's a cheap, easy fix. Can anybody tell me, is it in the budget, like, you know, to do that?
Well, I...
One of the cheapest things you could do. Well, I'll tell you that. Storm last night, I wish all of you people seen my neighborhood, you know. But what are you going to do? This stormwater management, that's a joke to me. There is no stormwater man, management in my neighborhood. You know, for once, I'd like to say something different, like other people, you know, have their problems, but they talk about, you know, selling the building and everything else. You know what? All right. October 2017, my house burned, and I put up a new house, foundation and all, same footprint of the old ranch house. You know what? Now I find out my taxes went up by $4,000. So for a change, I'd like to ask, like, who the heck makes the decision of how much to increase somebody's taxes? Now, I'm not talking my taxes went up to $4,000. My taxes were about $1,800 a year, but now it's $5,800. That's insanity. Who, who makes the decision to charge me an additional $4,000 now that I have a new house on the same property?
The County Board of Assessors, the County sets the assessments, and this is why, I know the majority of us on council have been talking about the need for a reassessment countywide. And that's, you just pinpointed a big part of the problem, that if you build new, you're taxed many times higher than an existing home, in your case, on the same exact footprint. But it is, it is assessed through the county. You do have the right to appeal your taxes. So if that's something, that would be something I would encourage you to look into.
Well, of course, I'm going to appeal it, but I just would like to know who the heck comes up with that assessment, you know, to increase it by $4,000. That's crazy, you know. Whoever has that job, boy, I'd like to have their job, I'll tell you. Okay, well, I'm here to push the thing of, you know, that pipe that's laying dormant, that's supposedly a good pipe, that'll alleviate a lot of the flooding problem, and everybody agrees that it's a good idea, and everything's going to work out. And, and I just hope that by the end, by the time the cold weather comes around again, that I don't hear, well, you know, the weather, we can't do anything right now. We'll have to wait till next year. You know, the flooding problem has been there for about 20 years now from other neighbors who tell me all the time, I'm wasting my time here. They've been here before on it. But I've had this, my own personal fight going on here for three years now, I'm dealing with this. So, once again, gentlemen, please help. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin McNichols. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, council. Lee Morgan. You know, I think that the residents of Scranton should really try to put something on the ballot to change the city's form of government, and hire a management team to run the city, and abolish the mayor's office, and abolish council. I really think we need a study. We need to have a study done to find out what's happened to all the community development money that's come into this city in the last 30 years, to see what benefit it's been to the average taxpayer and resident of this city. I believe that, you know, we need to really take a good, hard look at our state representative and our state senator, because the Scranton Sewer Authority was sold off, and I don't think anything was done with that money that benefited the residents in any way whatsoever. And when we sit here and we talk about stormwater management, the Scranton Sewer Authority had a plan for that management. They were going to build retention ponds. And we've turned all our assets over and sold everything off. And we've got a form of government that believes that they just can't have enough money. They just can't raise enough taxes in this community. And it has very little to do with old people. It has to do with everyone. Everyone's children, they're leaving the area. Jobs aren't coming here. They're leaving here. You know, you take a good, hard look, even AAA has left the city. Everybody. When you drive around the streets of this city, it's, it's really almost unbelievable that the only people who can escape this city are the residents who own properties here because nobody will buy them, as my friend Hank learned when he lost $113,000 on his house. And I'm not talking about profit, I'm talking about investment. I'm talking about what he paid for the house. That's a brutal loss to take. And you know, when you take a look at this thing, we've got to do some constructive things for some of the employees in this city. And I think that if the people voted to change this city's form of government, they'd do a great service for the fire and police, because I believe Scranton's fire department and Scranton's police department would be a great asset in creating a regional fire and police service throughout the whole county. Now, the county just sold the building for $1.6 million. And if the city had such a problem with this building, they could have bought that one and moved right in. There must, there has to be some kind of deal spinning around that building downtown. But you know, things, in my opinion, happen here so fast and so loose, that the residents never, they reel from one emergency to another. And when you take a look at what's happened to some of the community development money, I don't know, the Southside Sports Complex was built with Project 70 money. Gone. That was federal and state money. That was taxpayers' money. What happened to the pools? What happened to the millions of dollars spent at NAOG? All the money that's been dumped all over this city, but not in the neighborhoods. And I really think that all these neighborhood associations need to come together, get this and put it on the ballot, and change this city's government for once and for all. You know, it's pretty troubling when the FBI comes into your community and goes after a city's chief executive. And we don't even know where the rest of everything is going here. But you know something? We need some convictions, and not like what's happened at the Scranton School District. And I want the people to realize that 30 years ago or so, when the fight was on against construction of the new school, they swore that Central just wasn't salvageable. Lack one of colleges there now. Take a good, hard look at what's going on here. And the school you built down in the flats, it's a mess. Okay? And when you take a look at the closures they're talking about in elementary schools, I'm just curious if anybody on the Scranton School Board has ever read the state constitution and understand the obligation the state's under. But there's not one person on that board that has enough guts to stand up and go file something and fight for the students in this community. I know that's why I wanted to get on that board. You know, it's really troubling, and I think the greatest thing that could happen to this city is if we changed our form of government, stopped all the borrowing. We don't need a reassessment. We need people to understand that we elect, that people only have so much disposable income, and you've raised their taxes well beyond that point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, back again. Once again, I'd like to reiterate, we're running a big city here, and it's over eight miles long or something like that, and four or five miles wide. Well, just imagine 25% of the people not having their trash picked up. So, yeah, I fully support getting those people into court and collecting it any way you have to. But if they're not going to pay their fees, who says they're going to pay a per bag or whatever else? They're just going to throw it where they feel like, and hopefully they'll get away with it, and I'll wind up with some doofus from upstairs telling me, "I'm sorry, Mr. Dobson, but you're just going to have to have this removed." That I don't need. And if they keep it on their lawn, well, you'll have a lockout for your yard party next door and have the snakes come marching in, because the rats and everything else will be there. Okay. I've been very frustrated over the comments about ditching City Hall. I think this is the heart of the city, just like a body. If this goes, so goes the city. You renovate. We have a $5 million grant. If you're a representative of people in Scranton, please, don't dare not push it through. $5 million for renovation, or $5 million for the bank building, which, credit union building, which, who knows, as Lester put out, discussed earlier, what type of alterations that would take to fix it. You might be buying a whole bunch of little booths there, what do they call them? Anyway, it's time that our politicians run the city or bail. You know, we had, I called the Scranton Times last week on their comments in their editorial section, and they voraciously, and I told them this, you voraciously defended overspending on parking garages, voraciously over, undersized police station, cracks in the walls occurring a few years after it was built. The sidewalks have already been replaced. NAOG, the dressing room at NAOG, I mean, I was standing at a bathroom facility, and there was a little kid, maybe a foot away from me, getting dressed, you know? I just started going over to the concession stand when we're with kids swim free. It just goes on and on and on. So, you know, we can't have this incompetence going on forever. And skip the social issues. I don't want to hear anything more about tobacco. And that man was piled in here, this is the third time, the third time when we're talking over serious, serious government issues. Collect these fees and taxes in court. It's, I don't have the money to take care of them for everybody else, but that's, that's a, definitely, I consider that a positive tonight, a big positive. It's time that somebody starts to pay their fair share. And what's been done with those taxes on Mr. Lenny's garage, or Lenny's house, is totally ridiculous. I thought we had some kind of a plan here where, if you're going to count it as new construction, maybe he could get in under that. But I don't see why anybody should be paying more than $2,000 a year for a ranch-style house. It's not, that's totally ridiculous to have a 300% increase in your, your property tax. And as far as that credit union building, who knows the cost of converting that? What are you going to need? Like Lester said, will you have a hall like this? And who wants this hall at City Hall? I think they have enough. I know what parties would be interested, or I think I know. And they have enough now. It's time that they start to kick in themselves. These universities and colleges are getting like a country club, you know, like a country club. When I went to school, I just went to technical schools. I got it done, scored high grades, and I walked out. And I didn't need swimming, and I didn't need basketball, and I didn't need gym, because I hate them anyway. All righty. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher. Before I start, a slightly different approach, because I'd like to read you a sad story tonight, and maybe I'll have to finish it next week. But I would like to find out, probably next week, how frequently are firemen and police or drug and alcohol tested? This is crazy, what's going on. Okay, I'd like to take you back to October of 2014. Starts off with Schumacher. It's been a month now, almost a month since the deadline for paying the trash bill was negotiated. Do we have, it was Mr. Wexler's idea to bill those who had only made one payment or had made no payment follow through. I did a right to know, and I know there are thousands of people who have not paid, so I'm wondering if Mr. Evans has the exact numbers of how many paid and how many didn't pay, things that preceded this. Mr. Evans, "Not at that point, but I'll try to get them for next week." Mr. Wexler, "I know right now, the treasurer beck is in the process of determining homes that may have had multiple billings but don't have those apartments rented. So right now, those people are coming and providing with their electric bills that they did not have apartments rented, so they do not have to pay the additional fee. So if someone had, didn't rent the apartment for a year, they don't have to pay the extra tax. So I know right now that that process is still going on, and that's why there was some reluctance..." And that's why there was some reluctance into making out those deficient bills again." Schumacher, "Okay, but you don't have the breakdown on how many are?" And Mr. Wexler, "No, because it won't be. That information, they have to supply it to the end of October." Two weeks later, Dave DeBridgen says, Dobson says, "We have to start collecting delinquent taxes on trash and other city fees. It's wrong. You don't have to go in, you could put a lien against somebody's property. You don't have to go in and collect the money if they don't have it. But when somebody owns multiple properties and they are not paying these fees, it's a considerable burden on people. I don't know how somebody could have the nerve to sign up for a post on city council and owe a couple of thousand dollars in back city taxes." Schumacher, "First, because it's relative to the budget, I'd like to ask, this is into November now, I'd like to ask our finance chair, are the line items pure? We have a lot of several accounts, for instance, in the 2013, the landfill fees were not paid with the understanding they would be paid over the next three years. So is the money that's in the landfill now, how much of that is the one-third of the three-year payment? And two weeks ago, as long as we are on this, it was promised that I would get the materials next week, and that was not met. And I would like to know the number of the percent of people who did not pay their trash fee." Mr. Evans, "I know that. You want to answer that?" Mr. Wexler, "Those numbers aren't finalized yet because they are still determining the vacant property. People are appealing their bills, saying that they didn't rent them, so those numbers aren't finalized yet." Mr. Evans, "And I just talked to treasurer Wayne Beck, and he stated the same thing. The problem is that now people are coming in, appealing the fact that their properties were vacant, and they were sent a bill." Schumacher, "But of the bills that were sent out, what percentage had been paid? My calculation was roughly the same as other years, 75%." Mr. Evans, "We'll sign that out for you." Sometime later, I don't have the date on this one, but it's in November. "I'll ask, you promised to get the trash fee, the paid and the unpaid. Will you be giving that in fifth order?" Mr. Evans, "I don't have it." Schumacher, "Pardon?" Mr. Evans, "I don't have it at this time." Schumacher, "I don't understand why we don't have that. It's been almost two months since the period closed." Then we go into December 4th of 2014. Mr. Evans, "Thank you. I'm going to use my time to read the report that I got from the treasurer Wayne Beck today on the water waste disposals. The amount collected for the waste disposal fees through December 15th, 2014, totals, I'll just finish this one, $5,000, or $5,442,870. The amount collected for the period is the same as 2013, total 3.4 million. The amount budget for 2014 is 5.6 million. Therefore, you're at 94% of the total budget allocation with the last 15 days of November yet to be counted and all of December. So I think we may be on track to meet our budgeted item. The unpaid trash bills are $2,64,169. Of course, this does vacancy requests, condemned properties or demolished properties not yet reported. So we have some work to do on that front." Here we are, five years later, nothing. Lenny's been waiting for three years. Mr. Young waited since the mid-'90s to get his
Thank you.
finished. And I think you need to do something finally. Thank you. I'll be back next week.
Is there anyone else?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. Ms. Reed, there's, we did talk about this a little bit in caucus, there's a street, Burcham Beach, there's the Boylan Court. In between those two streets on Boylan, there's a city street light that is partially obstructed by a pine tree. Well, it was last week. Whether the storms did anything to help us or not, I don't know. But if we can have DPW take a look at that and see if there's something we can do to free that up, I'd appreciate it. Also, if we can send something out to Mr. Reed at DPW, there's a stop sign that's legible at Jones Street and Davis Street. If he can put that on or mark that for replacement and change that as convenes, that would be appreciated. And the only other comment I have is, I just want to say thank you to the DPW Fire and Police. I know they worked some long hours overnight into today, and they had some nice, fast response times for a fast-moving storm that encompassed the whole city. The city was, I know my yard, I was two hours late for work today, just trying to clean up and organize, so I can only imagine what that's like on a city scale. So just a quick thank you to them, and I hope everybody's safe and getting back to normality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any motions or comments?
Yes. I would also like to thank the police firefighters, DPW, and all other private entities who worked through the early morning hours and throughout the day responding to the severe storm that wrecked havoc throughout the city. After the storms last August that resulted in flooding throughout the city, I requested a breakdown of the city's emergency management plan. I never received a response from the administration, so Ms. Reed, would you be able to send a request to the mayor for the breakdown of the city's emergency response or emergency management plan? Like I've said before, these extreme weather events are becoming the norm as a result of climate change. Therefore, it's imperative to have a plan in place that establishes a process to effectively respond to emergency situations, such as the one we faced early this morning. Not only for the safety of the residents of this city, but also for the safety of our police and firefighters who are our first line of defense when these severe weather events occur. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Rogan, I forgot to, I know, Laurie, we talked about this during the caucus, about Mr. Serebro's issue. And Mr. Poshous, if you haven't sent anything out already, would you please just send a reminder out to see when this is gonna be done? Because I know he's aware of it, but just so we can get a timetable of it so we could report back. That would be appreciated. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Speaker last week wanted to know what accounts the refuse fees are put into as they come in. It's fairly simple. As refuse fees are received, money is deposited into an account designated as refuse account. This allows for the tracking of the fees. Each day, there's an automatic transfer of those funds from that account to the general fund. That's how it's set up. As promised, I would like to expand on my comments from last week on the restoration of City Hall. First, some additional observations that I didn't talk about last week. Based on my quick review, there are over 9,000 square feet of space within City Hall that is currently being used for storage, non-city use, or space that should be clearly repurposed to another more appropriate use. There's also 15,000 square feet that is currently used for appropriate office, appropriate space, like offices, et cetera. So clearly, there's an issue as to how valuable space is being used within this building. I've had some discussions with the VA about issuing what would be called an RFI, Request for Ideas from Interested Parties, to see if there is actually any real interest in purchasing and restoring City Hall. I suspect there will not be ideas that would be reviewed as realistic and workable. Like most things in government, there are rumors and conjecture as to what could be done with the building. But at the end of the day, I still have serious doubts that someone would come forward with a real and tangible proposal that would probably restore, properly restore this building and make it, make enough sense in that restoration that we would actually entertain it. But as I said all along, let's see what's out there, let's flesh out the ideas, and move on from there. But along with that RFI, I would press the administration for a second request. There should also be an RFP for a professional space planner to do a top-down review, design, and efficiency study on the use of every square foot of City Hall. We need to develop a plan for an efficient footprint of a user-friendly, employee-friendly, and citizen-friendly space for this building. This will be helpful in reviewing all of our options on an ongoing basis. But quite honestly, the current layout and design and use of space within City Hall may be the worst I've ever seen in an office work environment. So at this point, I would like to offer my recommendations if we do move forward on the much-needed restoration of City Hall. Number one, all of the exterior repairs as described in Priority One should be completed. Two, all of the interior repairs as described in Priority One should be completed. Three, some basic improvements from Priority Two, lists like the interior painting, et cetera, should also be completed. Four, the city should hire a full-time archivist to deal with the issue of records retention and record storage. Records that are no longer required should be destroyed. Those required by law should be digitized, scanned, and stored within the building if necessary and outside the building if appropriate. Five, the city should hire a professional office planner, as I mentioned before, who would redesign every office and every floor in this building into something that only, not only makes sense, but works effectively in efficiency for the employees and the citizens that visit this building on a daily basis. And six, you actually have to implement the plan. So once the plan is implemented, the city should develop a long-term capital improvement and maintenance plan using the Hyland Report as their template for further improvements down the road. Many improvements, particularly in areas like energy efficiency through heating and air conditioning enhancements and energy-efficient lighting, can and should be accomplished through aggressive grant writing, because there's a ton of money in those fields out in the world today. And what would that cost? Well, initially, Priority One items call for an investment of $4.75 million. Even adding a recommendation of an archivist, the hiring of a professional space planner, the implementation of the recommendations of those experts, and a built-in contingency fund may be an additional $1 million in contingency money might be needed. So that leaves us with a worst-case scenario of $5.75 million. That's a far cry from the $10.7 million estimate for the full restoration, which includes Priorities One through Priority Four, as well as with an aggressive contingency fund and soft costs included in that amount. So when this plan is implemented, you have a building with the exterior fully sealed and restored. A fully sealed and leak-proof interior, all damage repaired and replaced, and redesigned, leading to a far more functional space. A far more efficient municipal building than we have had in generations. So let's be clear, we don't have a people problem here. We have a building repair and restoration problem, and we can address that with these recommendations. And we have a storage and records retention problem, and we can address that with these recommendations. And we have an office design and layout problem that we can address with these recommendations. Of course, all of this, of course, is my personal opinion. But I'm sure there'll be other opinions that we'll hear from, and that's a good thing. The more ideas, the more opinions, the better. The future of City Hall is far too important not to have a full and comprehensive discussion on what we do from this point on. So that's all I have on that particular issue. And of course, as I have done lately, my final comment is, every day is your chance to make the city a little better. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, we received a letter from PennDOT that the city is going to be receiving their Liquid Fuels Tax Fund this year. We're going to receive $2,396,177.81 in the Liquid Fuels account. So that could go towards paving. I asked last, or two weeks ago, about the city's plan for our paving program for 2019. Did receive something back from Mr. Bolzoni. He stated that they're looking at using approximately $1 million and maybe some other monies for a paving project. And I did relay to Mr. Bolzoni that I would appreciate if they would consider council requests for what streets to put on the list, because we do receive an awful lot of requests from different residents throughout the neighborhoods. Secondly, someone asked me two or three weeks ago about the street sweeping program. We did receive a response from Mr. Gallagher. The street sweeping program will start April 29th in North Scranton from Green Bush Street to West Market Street. This program, the street sweeping program, will eventually be posted on the city's website, so you can go and see where, when your neighborhood is going to be swept by the DPW. We did discuss in the caucus, at this point, we have three street sweepers. And I've been saying this now for the last five years, and it's fallen on deaf ears with the administration, but it does not make any sense to me whatsoever that we would have a street sweeping program and we're gonna invest in that equipment, but we're not going to have alternate side-of-the-street parking. I know in my neighborhood, you know, the gentlemen from the DPW do a great job. They come down the street, my whole block is parked on the right-hand side of the road, or the left-hand side. So they don't get to the end of the street, so they actually are not properly sweeping the streets. And it's not their fault. I think the city needs to devise a plan for alternate side-of-the-street parking, not only with, for the street sweeping program, but as I've said in the past, with the snow plowing. And I've been told by members of the administration that it can't be done. And I've told them, there are multiple cities on the East Coast, all over the country, that have alternate side-of-the-street parking for things like street sweeping. So it can be done. And Mrs. Reed, I would like to send another plea to the administration that they put together a plan for this. As I said, if we're going to continue, and I hope that we would invest in the street sweeping program, even as part of the stormwater management program in the city, we're gonna need to take this more seriously and not just waste resources by sending a street sweeper up a street and not actually getting much done. So if you could take care of that request, I would appreciate it. The third thing I have tonight, we received a letter from the mayor that he is planning on appointing Dennis DiAgostino to the Ethics Board. Dennis DiAgostino is the chaplain for the Fire Department. Now, we discussed in the caucus, it clearly states in the Ethics Board, in the Ethics Legislation that no member that is going to be on the board may hold a position of employment or appointment with any municipal government or any board or commission formed by the city of Scranton. Now, I asked our solicitor, Menora, to look at that further. I think it's pretty clear. But I would just ask the mayor to rethink that pick. I don't think it's smart to start off the Ethics Board by putting someone on who has anything to do with the city government. Even though, I'm sure Mr. DiAgostino does a great job as the chaplain for the Fire Department, but that is a position that city council created by the request of the administration. So I don't think that would be appropriate. And I think we'll wait for the opinion of Mr. Menora, but I think it would actually violate the legislation. Mr. Evans brought up the City Hall Condition and Assessment Report. Mr. Donahue made a motion a few weeks ago to ask the administration to come in to discuss not only the assessment, but to discuss what the current building maintenance plan is and what it will be. If we're gonna sink all of this money, if that is the plan, to put money, grant money, and city money into the building, then what is going to be the plan moving forward? So we still have not heard anything from the administration. So in the caucus, I asked Mrs. Reed if she would send another letter on that. There was a letter sent by my request, February 27th, to the city controller and copied members of the administration about a $130,609.86 variance in the 2017 independent audit. We still cannot get an answer on this. We were told that they were looking into it. Mrs. Reed, I'd like to send another letter. I don't know what is taking so long, and I find it very concerning that you would have $130,000 variance. So where is that money? And we should be able to get an answer to that. Also, one of the things that has been discussed in the newspaper, and I've heard a lot about it from phone calls and emails, is the recycling issue with the recycling center not taking certain materials. So Councilman Evans had sent an email out asking for a public caucus with the recycling coordinator and the, I believe, the DPW director. So I believe that's going to be within the next two or three weeks. One of the items that I brought up in the caucus, I think it would be beneficial, is something that the Borough of Taylor did. If I can pull it out here for a minute. Lackawanna County has some sort of agreement with an application that you could get on your phone. It's called Recycle Coach. So there was a news story on WNEP, I just happened to see it, I printed out the article. The Borough of Taylor is the first municipality in Lackawanna County to join this application that you could download on your phone. And basically, what it is, if you download it, you will have your schedule for waste and recycle pickup right at your fingertips, so you can download it on your phone. It will send out alerts for when they are, when your recycling pickup is coming, when your trash pickup. Setting it up is really easy. All you have to do is put in your street address and you're done. In addition to the schedule, you can get a list of what you can and cannot recycle, which I think at this point will be very beneficial. If you don't have a smartphone and you can't use the app, there is an If you don't have a smartphone and you can't use the app, there is an online version of what's called Recycle Coach that you can use through. It would be the city's website. Taylor has put it on their website. So it is free, so I would ask Mrs. Reed if we could send a letter to the administration asking them, our recycling department, to look into that and to join that program. The other thing we brought up in the caucus, you know, over the last five years, as I sit up here on council, there's many people who come up with very good questions. And many times, council does not have the answers to those questions. So we have to go through this process that, to me, is very frustrating, where we have to go and ask the administration, wait for an answer, sometimes never get an answer. I've actually had to do right-to-no requests because I could not get a response from the administration. And it's just this very frustrating back and forth that I don't think has to happen. So I'd like to make a motion at this point that we send a letter to the mayor and the administration, asking that the mayor and all department heads come to city council meetings quarterly for the year to discuss programs, initiatives, and answer questions from city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question. I have seen this done in cities throughout the United States. I'm not asking the mayor and his department heads to come every week, because I don't think that's feasible, but at least once a quarter. There are some good things that go on in the city, but for some reason, in this administration, it is like pulling teeth to get information. So if the administration and the mayor want city council to be a partner with them, and they ask us to vote on legislation, I cannot see any reason why they would not want to come to a public caucus and tell us what they are doing, at least once a quarter. And I think my colleagues, at least in the caucus, they agreed with that. So again, it's not like they would be coming in front of the firing squad. We just want to know what is going on. And we want to be able to relay that to the citizens of Scranton. So I would hope that the mayor and the administration would take us up on that request so that we can start that program, and I think it would be very beneficial.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
The last thing I have, I read in the newspaper, as other people did, about a city employee who was involved in an accident on Bernie Avenue. And I was outraged by the response from the administration. They were asked by the newspaper whether or not this employee was on leave or if he was actively drawing a city paycheck. And the fire chief who responded refused to say. Now, I think that is totally ridiculous. I can understand a personnel issue, but there is no reason that someone who's getting paid with taxpayer funds cannot answer a simple question of whether or not a city employee is actively drawing a salary or if they are on some sort of leave. So I would like to ask as a city councilman for that information. I think it's very simple. I would also like to ask, because it came up in the newspaper, where this city employee lives. The newspaper has his address listed in Troop, which, and the fire chief said he lives in Scranton. So what is the actual address? I know, again, I know that this is a personnel issue, and you have to be careful, but I don't think that that's information that can't be shared publicly. And again, it frustrates me greatly that simple questions like this go unanswered. And this administration, since I've been here, has abused the right-to-know law. I've experienced it myself. I've asked for simple information that should be readily available, that someone could hit a button on their computer and print it out, and I've been told, well, I haven't been told, I've just assumed, because I was never getting an answer, do a right-to-know law, or do a right-to-know request. Did a right-to-know request? Didn't take five days, now it takes 30 days. So this administration, in my experience, is abusing this right-to-know law. And again, this is a city employee. This should be information that's readily available. Is he collecting a paycheck or is he on leave? That's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I'd like to echo what my colleagues mentioned to thank our police, fire, and DPW for their work with what happened with the storms last night. I know East Mountain and the Hill section really got hit pretty hard. Some other areas of the city, fortunately, not as bad, but I want to thank them for all of their hard work. Just a comment and suggestion that was brought up once again this week regarding not collecting the garbage of those who don't pay their fee. Again, can the city do it? Sure. But is it the most practical way to find a solution to this answer? I don't think it is. I do think the suggestion that another speaker brought up at the beginning of the meeting does make more sense of pursuing action at the magistrate's office while collecting, continuing to collect the garbage. I know it sounds nice to say, well, if they don't pay, they shouldn't get picked up, and I agree with the sentiment. I really do. But the practical reality is, in the middle of summer, when it's 90 degrees out, do you really want a pile of trash on both sides of you because your neighbor didn't pay their garbage fee? Again, we will be discussing this much more next week at our caucus, and obviously, it's been a very hot issue of late. Another issue that has come up over the last week, similar to the garbage issue, is recycling. We did get some flyers distributed to us, and I know I had a lot of residents asking me questions about what can be recycled, what can't be recycled. I'm going to go through some of those now, but I also want to read off, this is the phone number for Scranton's recycling coordinator. If you have any questions, please call this number, (570) 348-4165. And the email is recycling@scrantonpa.gov. So if you do have any questions on what can or can't be recycled, feel free to reach out. I am going to go through some of the information on these flyers that we were given. First, I'm going to go through the items that are yes with a thumbs up for recycling. Glasses and plastic, jars, bottles and jars, rinse-out bottles and jars, throwaway lids, cans, aluminum and steel tin cans, rinse-out beverage cans, throwaway lids unless attached, newspapers, phone books, magazines, catalogs, and brown bags. It says to stack them in a brown bag or tie them. Obviously, you can put them in your red can as well. And office paper. It says if it's paper that you would write on, you could recycle it. The list of no items, and I will say I was surprised that a couple of these that I had myself, I've been previously putting in my recycling bin that are not recyclable. Number one, margarine tubs, deli and yogurt cups, plastic and foam dishes, plastic bags, bakery boxes, light bulbs, plate and window glass, drinking glasses, ceramic cups, plates, and cookware, flower pots, paint cans, motor oil or chemical containers, cereal boxes, food wrappers, bubble wrap, Tyvek envelopes, it's the plastic-type envelopes, and books. So some of these that are on this no list, to me, were very surprising. I know I had been putting some of these items in my recycling as well. So there are these flyers available. There's also another flyer that's available as well that lists the same information, just in a more colorful format. And I do want to reiterate that unfortunately, this issue is not unique to Scranton. The global recycling market has changed, and it's been reported in the newspaper quite a bit as to what happened. But the city does not set these standards. These standards are set by the county recycling center, and it is important that residents go by these standards, because if loads are rejected at the recycling center, they would then go to the landfill. So as I mentioned, if anyone has any questions, I'll say the number one more time. You can contact our recycling coordinator, and that's (570) 348-4165. Thank you.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the Council Number 61, 2019. Amending file of the Council Number 95, 2015. An ordinance entitled, amending file of the Council Number 79 of 2015. An ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 145 of 2007, entitled. An ordinance renaming the emergency and municipal services tax to local service tax, and by imposing withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015. And the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53, PS Section 6924.101 et cetera, and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53, PS Section 11701.101 et cetera, and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1, 2019. This tax is expected to generate approximately $4,653,335 in revenue in calendar year 2019 by enabling the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2018 rate for fiscal year 2019, for a total maximum local services rate of $156 for the fiscal year 2019 effective retroactive to January 1, 2019, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2019.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second, on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the Council Number 62, 2019. Amending file of the Council Number 58, 2016, as amended. An ordinance establishing a registration program for residential rental properties, requiring all owners of residential rental properties to designate a property manager for service of process and prescribing duties of owners, property managers, and occupants by amending Section 4A1 and B1 and 2, and Section 10A, to abolish the tiered rate structure for 2019 and reduce the rental registration fee for 2020 and 2021.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second, on the question?
Yes, on the question. Two weeks ago, I had asked Mrs. Reed to talk with Mr. Bolzoni about a contract that the city passed, or city council passed, Resolution 176, 2017, that was intended to assist the licensing and inspections department with rental registration database compilation and management. This was for a three-year period. I wanted to know if that process was halted during the rental registration lawsuit period. I also wanted to know if Mr. Moran, who was in charge of the company to do this work, sold his business and/or partnered with Community Champions, who apparently is now performing this work. Mr. Bolzoni responded, "He completed his data compilation, which was used by the rental registration clerks. Some information was unfortunately a duplicate, but the clerks were behind at that time, so we accepted all of the data. All of the data. It was useful. We decided not to use his payment system, since I didn't think it offered enough technologically, and the lawsuit wasn't resolved anyway. I also didn't like his insistence in distributing funds monthly. He is not in any way affiliated with Community Champions. I confirmed that with Community after I heard the rumor as well, that may have been approximately a year ago. Hope this helps." I am, you know, I want to do a follow-up with Mr. Bolzoni. I'm still confused on the whole arrangement. I did vote against this contract three years ago, because I didn't think it was appropriate, and it wasn't going to be helpful at that time, based on the people we had in the department already doing the job, for the most part. So I am going to follow up on that. Also, we did not receive a response to my question about Section 10 in this legislation, which was about the rental escrow program. Section 10 says, "In addition to all other penalty and enforcement remedies established by this chapter or by any other Scranton ordinance, including but not limited to the property maintenance code, owners and landlords of residential rental units within the municipality of Scranton shall be subject to the municipality of Scranton rental escrow program, which is hereby established by this chapter." So I just had a basic question on what the plan is to enforce Section 10, because oftentimes, what I found is that we pass legislation with no thought as to how we're going to enforce certain sections. And then, as Mrs. Schumacher pointed out quite a few times, years later, we find out that, you know, part of the legislation was never enforced or was never followed. So I did not receive a response to that question. I'm still going to vote for this legislation, because basically, all it is is taking into account the judgment regarding the lawsuit. But I would like Mrs. Reed to please follow up again, so that we can understand how the city is going to enforce Section 10. If somebody who is going to pay the rental registration fee does not end up paying it, and the city is going to escrow the rent, how is that going to work? So that's my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 110, 2019. Appointment of P. James Wintermantle, 3 Mountain Lake Road, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Parking Authority, effective March 28, 2019. Mr. Wintermantle will be replacing Thomas Borthwick, who resigned March 16, 2019. Mr. Wintermantle will fill the unexpired term of Thomas Borthwick, whose term is scheduled to expire on June 1, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C. Second, on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 111, 2019. Authorizing support of Restore Pennsylvania, an infrastructure improvement plan, which will provide an additional $4.5 billion to assist communities across Pennsylvania combat blight, develop stormwater management and flood plans, provide high-speed internet access, and invest in transportation infrastructure projects, which will be advantageous to the city of Scranton in dealing with these issues.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend a final vote on Item 7D. Second, on the question?
Yes, on the question. This infrastructure improvement initiative from Governor Wolf will be funded by a common sense severance tax. We're the only natural gas-producing state in the nation that does not have a severance tax in the natural gas extraction. Whether you live in a county that actually produces natural gas or not, the negative effects of that industry affect us all, whether it's more frequent heavy truck traffic on our roads, the disposable fracking sludge into our local landfills, gas pipelines through communities, or cutting down thousands of trees on the side of West Mountain for an electrical transmission line. If we're going to deal with these negative effects of this industry, we must demand something in return. This initiative will allow the revenue from a severance tax to be reinvested in communities throughout Pennsylvania, to position those communities to be prepared for 21st century problems, such as the lack of high-speed internet access, critical flood control infrastructure, helping families who experience flooding rebuild, effective stormwater initiatives, and blight demolition redevelopment, and green infrastructure, to just name a few. The time to address these critical issues is now, and I fully support this initiative. Thank you.
On the question, I do agree that this proposal is significantly better than previous proposals for a severance tax. But on the face of it, I do not support a severance tax. I think the natural gas industry has been good for Pennsylvania. So for that reason, I will vote no. But I do think this proposal is significantly better than previous proposals. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
No. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. If there is no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
This meeting's adjourned.